Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Farmington Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, April 3, 2018. If you could please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Next time on the agenda, I am in 5, 5A, Farmington High School Course Sequence Overview.
We thought we would provide an overview of the updates to the FHS course sequence across subject areas. So I want to invite our department leaders, Laura Lanza, Mathematics Department Leader, Amy Miller, English Department Leader, Nicole Richman, Social Studies Department Leader, Jerry Chamberlain, who is sadly retiring this year after many years of exemplary service to the Farmington School. Jerry is our World Language Department Leader. I know Veronica is here, our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, as well as Kirk Pandecio, our Assistant Principal at FHS. So we have, oh, and Mary's here.
Mary and Bill.
Mary, our Dean of Students, and Bill Silva, our Principal. This is a full house tonight. All right.
My son's going into ninth grade, so I brought his. I brought my son, he's going into ninth grade, so I brought his.
Thank you.
So you're getting a copy of our Program of Studies, and if you are a parent on the board, you've seen this before. This is updated each year, and really impressive Program of Studies here at FHS.
Is he coming?
Yes.
You're welcome. Oh, yeah, this is, I just did this. Okay. All right, so I'm up first. I'm Laura Lanza, I'm the Math Department Leader here at FHS, and I just sent around our recommended math pathways, and those are also updated in the Program of Studies. So over the past four years, we've really progressed in our understanding of standards-based teaching and learning. As a math department, we really envisioned that all students should have the opportunity to master the core content in Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II, and therefore they're adequately prepared for our higher-level math classes and beyond into, you know, wherever they go after FHS. This vision requires time to be more flexible. It also requires us to offer more choice to students. We do have a math interventionist that collaborates with teachers to support students throughout a course to ensure that the majority of them are successful. But by semesterizing many of our courses, we'll also be able to catch the struggling students at the end of a semester, and therefore they can repeat just that semester instead of potentially failing an entire year and having to repeat an entire academic math year. We've also had the shift to Common Core, which has allowed a little bit more flexibility in our math pathways. Many of our old high school geometry standards are now covered in 7th and 8th grade. We've looked at student performance at IAR, on internal assessments, as well as our standardized assessments, and we really do not need to be reteaching a lot of those geometry standards. So we're going to take geometry and put it as a one semester course and condense it. But for students who really like geometry, there will be a geometry applications elective that they can take in either 10th, 11th, or 12th grade. Along with the Common Core shift came more Algebra II standards. So for the time being, we were fitting all those standards into two semesters of Algebra II. Veronica Ruzek and I conducted an SAT study with five of the math teachers at FHS, and we analyzed a lot of data, we looked question by question on certain SAT tests. The teachers became more comfortable with how to integrate some of that methodology into their instruction, and our ultimate kind of conclusion was that there was just a lot of content to cover in two semesters in order for students to go deeply into the content and be able to think flexibly about their problem solving and connect things to the real world. So we wanted to allow for three semesters of Algebra II, and condensing geometry to one semester allowed for that. So the first two semesters can cover the content that's on SATs, but in a little bit of a more stretched time period, students can go more deeply, and students can still be successful in a non-calculus pathway by taking just the two semesters of Algebra II. This also means that students will be done with their two semesters of Algebra II, 75% of them, before taking the SATs, whereas currently they're in the middle of the second semester of Algebra II when they take SATs. So that also gives us a little bit more time to intervene if necessary, and then students who want to go on to advanced coursework can take a third semester of Algebra II, go on to pre-calculus and calculus. So in the old pathways, approximately 25% of students would not be completing Algebra II until the end of their junior year, whereas now 75% of students are finishing it, you know, before taking those SATs. And, you know, the SATs are important, but it's not all we're thinking about. We really, our main goal is that students can delve deeply into the content and be able to be more flexible thinkers, and we can get some more real-world experiences into the curriculum. So those are our main reasons for changing the pathway. We have a lot of math electives now, AP Statistics, Discrete Math, Logic and Reasoning, Geometry Applications, Descriptive Stats, Inferential Stats, Personal Finance can now be a half-math credit for students, and students can begin taking these math electives in 10th grade if they want to. So that start, that pathway flexibility starts much earlier for them with these new pathways.
Thank you, Laura. Any questions?
I was gonna say, now I can explain to my son why he's doing what he's doing in 7th grade. Draw the line about why he's doing this. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Huge help for me, my housewife.
Actually, I have a question.
Yep, go ahead.
So, kind of along the lines of Bill, but I'm thinking of explaining it to other, to parents who might have questions. So, I mean, what you just said was excellent. Have you, is this the first time that people are hearing about this right now at this moment?
So we've talked about it as a math department and at the, you know, town hall level, central office, for over a year. You know, it's kind of a grassroots kind of thing. Students know about it, we've talked about it in all of our math classes.
So the students know, so if they go home and tell their parents, they know it's gonna happen.
Oh, yeah, we've been talking about this since November with students, if not sooner than that.
All right. I mean, because it's been talked about, but now it's actually gonna happen, so, you know, sometimes we see a disconnect between what we think is being talked about and, you know, so if parent, I just wanted to make sure that this isn't gonna be a surprise.
Oh, no.
No, we don't think it should be a surprise. Sometimes things are a surprise.
Students have chosen their courses, they met with their school counselors, parents are invited to those meetings.
Okay, so, that's good. All right, thank you.
It's studies, and it's also on our website.
Right. But I think the exponent, looking at this kind of, in its own iteration, without the context that was provided, I don't know if people would kind of translate the theory behind why you developed the pathway the way you did, why you made the change, for example, the Common Core evolution. That's an important point that I think people don't fully appreciate. So this is, I'm saying, this is good, this is important, this is to help us publicize why we're doing what we're doing. Because as we continue in our mission, we learned a lot in the last year, so about how we need to do a better job of making sure people understand why doesn't we do what we do. So thank you, it was excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
Just a quick question, Laura. I mean, it seems that if you excel in Algebra VIII, you'll be considered for Algebra II H. Is there further, I mean, marker of excellence, excelling or maturation in the math? I mean, can you go between these pathways, or is this, are you?
No, you definitely can go between the pathways. These are the recommended pathways, you know, what 90% or more of students are going to follow.
Okay.
So there's always flexibility if you're not succeeding in CP because you need more of a challenge, move up to honors, or vice versa. We always offer students to take summer courses and, you know, accelerate their pathways. Definitely possible.
I also think even starting at Westwood, they start to talk about these pathways, because there are choices that are made even, you know, early on. So, and then on page 53, there's also reference to the pathways in the Program of Studies. I'd also, I really want to commend the math department, because I often would do focus groups with students, and one of the things they would give to me as feedback is they were almost stuck in a pathway, that they were not interested, they weren't gonna go into a career with a need for high-level math, and they would get, they would start very early on, as a younger student, in one of these accelerated pathways, and then they were in their sophomore year saying, "I'm not really interested in going into these courses, but I'm really stuck there." So I really like the flexibility that you've created within each of the pathways, much more flexibility.
Yes.
Any questions, Andrea?
The order, is it geometry first and then 2A?
Yes.
All right.
Yep.
Any other questions for Laura? Okay, thank you very much, Laura.
Hi, I'm Amy Miller, I am the English Department Leader, and I'm thrilled to talk to you about the changes we are going to see primarily at the junior level and the senior level here at the high school next year. So we are piloting a new elective program for seniors, which is where I'll start at the bottom of our graphic, with nine new half-year elective courses. This came out of a lot of the work that we've been doing in the department this year to really distinct, make a distinction between our graduation standards that we need all students to be able to meet our expectation on in order to graduate, and then our extension standards, what we hope that students are reaching at the 11th and 12th grade, if not sooner, depending on where they are. The courses that we are currently offering to seniors were all primarily literary analysis-focused, and fewer than 5% of our graduates are going on to be English majors, and even fewer than that are going on to pursue academic careers in literature in which they would need that high level of literary analysis. So considering that we want students to be actualizing our vision of the graduate traits as well as these extension standards that we have in English, we were committed to making a more robust program that was driven by student choice, that had assured experiences that all students would be covering, but via different content based on their interest here in the high school and beyond. So we began the process last year with research. A team of teachers from my department started looking into other comparable high schools' programs of study and finding our course offerings lacking by comparison. We also began looking into the Accuplacer test to see what the skills were that students were being asked to demonstrate understanding of and ability on in order to be considered eligible and ready for college-level work. We also started looking at college programs of study with a specific focus on the freshman year course offerings to see what students were being asked to do, and we did a little professional development with the Director of the Writing Center at Yale, who walked us through their freshman course and what students were being asked to do so that we could tailor our experiences toward those. From that, we brainstormed a list of courses that we thought were the most common frequency courses we were seeing in other high school programs of study, and also tapping into the diverse interests that we see in our students. And at the same time, we began working on the curriculum angle on what we believed to be the core experiences we wanted every single senior to have despite which course they might elect to take. So we came up with five Assured Experiences, which is the framework for the curriculum, no matter what the title is or the vehicle, the content vehicle by which they perform on those different experiences. And then we whittled our list down to sort of our first rollout, what we thought were the most important courses, and started working on what the content would be for each of those. At the time, we had 13, and so from there, we began collecting student interest data, starting with a focus group of current juniors, who we presented the list of titles to and allowed them to speak about their expectations for each of those courses, and then gave the little course blurbs to, so we could see if the titles were accurately portraying what we wanted the courses to be communicating, and then also if, once the students saw how we were describing the courses, if they were still interested in taking them. We took that data down, revised those blurbs, what we were, how we were describing the courses, and then ran a demo enrollment for all of our current juniors, essentially asking them, "If you were picking a course today, which would you take?" So from there, we cut out any classes that weren't going to have at least one, if not two, solid sections, sort of backburnering them for perhaps a later rollout, and focused in on our nine most popular choices, which you can see listed in the bottom left-hand corner, Children's Lit, Communications, Creative Writing, Cultural Studies, Heroes and Monsters, Lit to Film, Poetry, Popular Lit, and Utopias and Dystopias. Every single one of those courses will have students following the same curriculum in terms of the same five Assured Experiences with common rubrics and common expectations. The content will differ, to allow students the best access to those, and therefore, sort of the focus on each of those Assured Experiences may be a little bit different, but they will all still be exposed to them. We are ensuring, no matter which class they take, that students are being exposed to multicultural perspectives, both fiction and nonfiction texts, as well as a high level of rigor with critical thinking via our content. We also made the decision, after consulting with the College Board, to open up our two AP course offerings, Language and Literature, to both juniors and seniors. Different high schools offer them in a different sequence, and College Board has no definitive statement about why one should be earlier than the other, so we figured if we were already trying to get students to really focus on their interests, why not also offer this as well? And when we ran the demo enrollment numbers, we had 31 juniors say that they would go straight into literature if they were given the option, which made me think that that was the right choice then, because then there were students who perhaps would not have pursued AP Language at the junior level, but did want to take literature, you know, and then maybe they'll continue in AP coursework as seniors as well. So, those are the senior electives, and Nicole and I are also going to speak to you about American Studies, our new joint course offering for juniors. Do you want, should I take, I could take questions about the seniors first, if anyone has any.
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Great. So, American Studies is a new honors-level class that we will be offering together, the English Department and the History Department. This is my colleague, Nicole Richman. We're really excited about this. It's going to be a two-period class, co-taught by an English teacher and a history teacher. We are, in this way, students will be able to both fulfill their US History graduation requirement and also be pursuing American literature embedded through the history. What we found was that the American literature offerings that we have often required English teachers to do sort of a thin historical context to place the literature in that way, and by pairing the two classes together, really hoping to deepen their understanding, to give students a more rich and contextualized experience of the literature as well as the history from those two cultural perspectives. We really believe that this will allow students to be more active citizens and more engaged with the coursework, and that for some students who either really like that pairing, this will capitalize on that interest, that they like the way that the history and the literature intermingle, and for other students who may struggle with one or the other by pairing them, they'll be able to have that deeper understanding and that richer context for what they are reading.
On my end, for my department, we've had a pretty significant focus on AP US History the past few years, and we've had about 20% increased enrollment, so about 70% of juniors take AP US History, which is fantastic, it is the most enrolled AP course in the school, but we would need to make sure that our other offerings are experiences that have their own draw to them, that students really want to take, not just because they didn't want to take AP US History or any other course, and we think that this really is that opportunity for students. In addition, it will be one of the first kind of truly integrated co-teaching experiences, and we know that that's an area that NEASC has recommended that we improve upon, providing an interdisciplinary experience for students. And so having this double block of time, two talented teachers in the room, we think that students will really benefit from that block, now we've gained passing time too, and that it will let them dig much deeper in than they would have in one history class and one English class separately. So we've been doing quite a bit of work to prepare for it. Amy and I went down and did a site visit at Fairfield Ward. They have an American Studies, they actually have an AP American Studies program where they combine AP US History and AP Lang. And so we did a stay there and talked to students, and those students reported that this class, although one of their most rigorous, has been their most enjoyable, and they really talked about the, you know, their ability to appreciate the literature more for the history and the history more for the literature, and they also talked about how they felt kind of managing that type of a class was really great for them as a learner.
We're also really impressed with how they spoke about the way that the class encouraged them to build empathy for varied perspectives, and the diversity in perspectives, that putting the two classes together deepened their exposure in that way and really helped them synthesize their learning. And so we kind of wanted to encapsulate everything that we heard students say and bring it to our own students here in Farmington.
Right, and so the teachers that we have selected to teach the course will now go on and do their own site visits. They have a similar program at Ellington and one at Ram as well, and so teachers will go and talk to the teachers that teach American Studies in those two schools, spend a day there, be able to observe. We're working with them and coaching them on curriculum writing right now to prep them for summer work, and so Amy and I have been very hands-on in trying to craft this experience because we definitely have our own vision for how it should look, and so we want to make sure that when the curriculum is being crafted, it really reflects all this good things that we've already done around it.
We've also encouraged our teachers to branch out and get some professional development in the community. Actually, today, the English end, our teacher on the English end was at a professional training at the Mark Twainhausen Museum that was put on for all the teachers of the year. Julie Sawyer was unable to attend, so she had extended her invitation to us, and then we were like, "Actually, this would be a great opportunity for our teachers," in which they're talking about thinking like a curator and the use of historical objects. We were also really inspired by a site visit we did at the Hillstead Museum, and together with our teachers are working on a culminating project in which they're going to produce a work of historical fiction, inspired by one of the infinite ways that you can access history through what the Hillstead Museum has, and so we really see this class as a way for them to break down some of what has been done and to think about what could be, and capitalizing on what's around us.
Any questions, Liz?
So, this is very, I love this idea, it's awesome. So, I guess I have just a couple questions. Is it gonna be, when you answered the question, it's gonna be co-taught, so that's, but is it gonna be co-taught like one period with, or it's two periods both together, like?
We have it, we have.
Teachers, I mean.
Two periods with both teachers.
Okay, all right, so that's.
Do you really feel like that's a better model? Because otherwise you'd kind of get your standalone history and then your standalone English, and they would come together, but we really want an integrated experience where assessments are aligned, where, you know, one teacher could have a larger group, and then another teacher can do some small group instruction for students who might need an intervention.
We also have so much overlap in our standards that it really works well in terms of thinking about what the assessments will be asking kids to be able to do to have them truly be integrated, not something they're doing for the English teacher or for the history teacher in the room.
So I have, so the, is it gonna be only, so you're gonna do some writing, like you said, some historical fiction's a good idea, things, but is it gonna be, when you're, the reading that the students do, is it limited to American authors, or is it gonna be any author that, like, goes into American history, or?
Well, the course itself is an American history course and an American literature course.
So it's, so it's.
However, I mean, you may find that there's an author who provides a unique experience, you know.
Right.
Perspective on American history that would be totally appropriate to tie in.
Okay, I mean, because I'm thinking, I had a course like this in college, and I can't remember if it was Political Science or History, but it was like, you know, The Wizard of Oz and Grapes of Wrath and things like that, so, I mean, it's a phenomenal class, it's a great idea. It kind of reminds me of when we were talking about the high school that isn't, how we were going to have the, you know, groupings together of like, things.
Yes.
This is a perfect example.
The high school that will have.
The dream lives on.
So good. Thank you.
That is a good point about the space, because it means that we're using a bigger space to accommodate all the students, and we don't have very many big spaces, so it's in the amphitheater room.
There is only one space that can accommodate a course like this.
So what size class is that gonna be? How many, sorry, how many students will you have?
We'll enroll up to 50 in each two-period block.
Got it.
So there are currently 45 in each two-period block, and so the still, the teacher to ratio, student ratio is still in line with the averages across the department.
And even though it is in, you know, we consider the lecture hall, that's, the space won't determine the type of instruction that will be happening in there. I mean, clearly, we have space issues, you know, all throughout the site high school that doesn't inhibit our instruction, and so we really think that the larger space will just encourage our teachers to be more creative, as Nicole was mentioning earlier, about how to break apart a larger group and make it small, and cater to the varied needs in the room simultaneously.
Can I ask one more?
Absolutely.
So you mentioned the different standards between the two different areas. Is it still one rubric though, or is it two separate for the two separate areas?
We'll have, we'll have similar rubrics, and they'll share a gradebook. There'll be certain times when they'll be reporting out on one that may be more distinct to a social studies standard, or one that's distinct to an English standard.
Okay.
But one of the things that we're actually, you know, that we're already starting to talk about is the fact that we want to borrow some of their standards at some point when it's relevant, and so they have a speaking and listening standard and ELA. We don't, but we do at times want to evaluate students speaking and listening, and so we pull from the VOG Communication rubric, but in this particular case, that would be a really logical pairing, and we both share already argument-writing standards that are almost the same because they're Common Core-inspired.
Makes sense. Thank you.
I thought of another question. I forgot to ask this one, sorry. So, this is gonna be open to sophomores and up, or just?
Juniors only.
Juniors only? And is it gonna be on, like, so let's say that a lot of people, a lot of students want to take the class, is it gonna be on recommendation? Is it gonna be, like, heterogeneous grouping, homogeneous group, like, what's the course gonna look like?
It's heterogeneously grouped, and students currently don't need to be recommended into it. We're trying, I mean, we're not appealing specifically to an academic elite, which is something that we had heard at Fairfield Ward, for example, when we were speaking about that, or when we were investigating how courses like this are being handled at other schools, was they were trying to say sort of like, "Well, this is the best of our best, so we offer them this great thing." And that's exactly what we were not trying to do with this. We have lots of great things for many of our students, and our students at the top of our academic performance ladder have many robust course offerings. We want to make sure that all students are. So, you know, we hope that it grows, and we can offer a third section perhaps in the future, but we were thrilled to have two excited groups of students right now.
But we're also, you know, across the high school, really less reliant on course recommendations as we really encourage students, one, to make their own choices, but two, as we try and eliminate barriers for students to access those more rigorous experiences, so that kind of is across the board.
Yeah, good, okay, thank you.
Well, thank you both, it was wonderful.
My last presentation to the board. So I'm gonna.
She thinks that that's the case.
You never get away with it.
You never leave us.
So I'm gonna go big and talk about three different things.
I think there's one. So the last time I spoke to you in November, I spoke about the elementary program, but this time I'd like to talk to you about what's new, or what's going to be new at Farmington High School in the World Language Department next year. It's exciting times in World Language also, just like math, social studies, and English. Next year, we will be collapsing course levels at Farmington High School to create heterogeneous groupings in the lower-level classes. It's what you just said, Nicole, was a perfect segue into what I'm saying now. So, which means that our current French and Spanish two honors classes will become French and Spanish two honors, and our current French and Spanish three and three honors classes will become French and Spanish three honors. Our rationale for making this change is really that all students in both levels, the honors or the college prep levels, prepare for and take the same FLST, the Graduation Requirement Standards Test, at the end of Level Three or Three Honors. So it didn't really make sense to have them be in separate classes at. So it didn't really make sense to have them be in separate classes at different levels. After the Farmington High School graduation requirement is met by virtue of the FLST, that's when World Language really becomes an elective for our students and it makes more sense for them to then choose to pursue the college prep pathway or the honors pathway for the rest of their language courses. And again, they're the ones making that decision, you know, based on how they have done and what their level of interest is, perhaps what they're planning to do post-high school. Teachers have been preparing for this switch by recently having training with Dr. Lori Singer regarding UDL and with our colleague, Kalino Kino, regarding assistive technology. And we also visited freshman social studies classes in the fall to see what those heterogeneously grouped classes look like, to get a better idea of what that might mean for us in the future. All teachers who will be teaching these courses, the French and Spanish three honors classes next year, have currently been teaching, I'm sorry, the ones that will be teaching the three honors classes next year are currently teaching three and three honors. So we have the two groups of teachers who are coming together to teach now what the new course will be. So you can see there, they're all familiar with the curriculum and they'll be able to collaborate to identify systems of support that are needed as well as systems of challenge for students as we go along. Also, with mastery-based grading, I just think that teachers will be so much better informed of students' progress, students' areas of strength and weakness even more precisely than they have been able to be in the past and therefore can support all our students to be successful as they move forward. The next thing I'd like to talk about is American Sign Language. I'm so excited that we'll be able to offer this for the first time as an elective to our students next year. For next year, since this is really the first time we're offering it, we're going to make it available for students once they have met the World Language Graduation Requirement. There's been great interest already among students during the course selection process. The counselors have reported how students were so excited about this possibility. It's so practical for just a wide range of future endeavors and careers that students might pursue, all of the service fields, medical fields, or really any area which involves working with the public, you know? This could be, this could come in very handy and, as I said, be very practical and useful. In the future, we're thinking that ASL could possibly be an alternative to the traditional French and Spanish, especially for students with a predominantly kinesthetic learning style or for students whose strength is not really oral or written communication. And the third thing I want to talk to you about? I'm excited about all of these initiatives, but I think maybe the most is the last one, the Seal of Bilinguacy. In September, the state of Connecticut approved the Seal of Bilinguacy to be awarded as an acknowledgement of a student's proficiency in both English and a second language. At Farmington High School, students in the class of 2019 will be the first eligible for the seal and participation will be on a voluntary basis. Students who are interested in pursuing this will take, well, in World Language, we have a lot of acronyms. So we'll take ACTFOLs, which is the American Council of Teachers of Foreign Languages test called the Assessment of Performance Toward Proficiency in Language, which we call the Apple, which is an online interactive measurement of language proficiency. And in order to reach or in order to prove that students are proficient in the language, they have to score at an intermediate mid-level in all four skills, reading, writing, speaking, and listening on this test, as well as meet all of the graduation requirements in English. We will be providing two opportunities to take this assessment in the spring of Grade 11 and then again in the fall of Grade 12. This year, on April 21st, students can take the Apple and French and Spanish. We have 21 students registered already. I'm working with Lori Wirebeck of Continuing Ed to provide the test. And in the fall, I've reserved September 15th and the 22nd for students to take the Apple and French and Spanish, but we can also offer this to a variety of other languages that the Apple offers. So in this way, a student might want to pursue the Seal of Bilinguacy to recognize that he is proficient in perhaps a native language that is other than English. For example, we have many students who speak Polish or Chinese or perhaps to recognize his proficiency as a heritage language speaker. So it doesn't just have to be the French or Spanish that they study in school. This is something that we want seniors to be able to include with their college application materials, so that's why we're offering them at these two times, spring of junior year and then fall of senior year. The seal, which you can see on your handout, can, will be attached to a student's diploma and/or transcript. And I just recently found out how we get that seal, so.
There's all kinds of crazy stories about where it was going to come from. You've got a little sticker that you could buy in an convenience store.
I just wanted you to also know that I've been working with counseling and one of the instructional coaches to explore how we could acknowledge and really celebrate students who do receive the Seal of Bilinguacy. We were thinking perhaps at our World Language Awards Ceremony or perhaps with a special morning breakfast where we could invite students, parents, teachers of both World Language and English, excuse me, and honor all of the students at that time. So those are the exciting initiatives in World Language for next year. Do you have any questions?
Open it. Any questions?
I have one. So, sorry, I have all these questions. I can tell how excited you are about it. You're so, you're like all happy. That's great. So if you take the, like, let's say your student, you take this apple and you score high enough on three of the sections, do you have to take the whole thing over again or you can only take the one?
No. You can take the other one over again.
Okay.
Yes.
So you don't have to start over and?
No, no, no.
And Jared, and Lou, if we're rolling everything up to French Three and Spanish Three H, you know, Three H and Three H in both languages, I mean, how do we differentiate amongst the needs of the students across the spectrum in terms of proficiencies and needs, you know, both at the lower end, the higher end, and then the kids in the middle, I guess? Maybe, I'm just wondering if everything's under one offering?
Well, the Three is purposeful because at the end of that level is when they take the FLST. And that same test has, it's the same test that has been given to both students in the Threes and the Three Honors prior to that. But within the class, you're right, heterogeneous means that there are going to be students with a wider variety of needs as well as abilities. So that's why we've been working with Lori Singer to get some training in the Universal Design for Learning, really coming to understand how we can help our students to achieve at the levels that we want them to and maintain our rigorous expectations that we've always had. And we also will be exploring how to challenge those students who maybe can go a little faster or can achieve quicker, you know? And so we want to make sure that we are supporting them as well with their needs.
Thank you. Any other questions? Alright. Veronica, we're, okay, well, I'd like to thank Veronica, obviously, and then, you know, each of you for your presentation tonight. I mean, I think just listening to everything that's sort of our curriculum offers that are aligning with our vision of the graduate and sort of tailored to meet the interests and needs of our students and sort of this interdisciplinary approach is really exciting and fascinating and I, you know, it's, I think our students should be excited about what they have in store for them as I think the parents should too in terms of the offerings. So I want to thank you for all your hard work and really creating, it's sort of a dynamic curriculum for our students, so thank you very much.
I think the flexibility is really going to personalize these pathways for our students so that they can explore their interests. I'm really excited that they're, you know, everything, all the courses you talk about are aligned to our vision of the graduate. They're rigorous, they have high expectations, impressive on their transcript because we do want our students moving on and all of them being viewed as a well-prepared student. And I think as I listened to all of you, I felt like you kept that VOG in mind and not only our vision of the graduate, but our core beliefs. And especially in the area of Equity Matters, each one of you talked about, it's about all students. We're not going to limit students. We're not going to have these requirements to get into certain courses and that has been a tradition here in Farmington and it has served us very well and it's served our students very well. I, you know, you, just the way you're talking about a framework for teaching and learning, a very active, dynamic learning environment, and our theory of action is just woven through each of those courses, you know, purpose-driven learning, self-directed, socially-constructed, mastery-based. So I just really want to commend Bill and Kurt and Mary and Lisa and Veronica, Kim, and our extraordinary department leaders. I mean, each one of you has just led the departments in just an exemplary way and I, I'm, you know, I think back of nine years ago and we went out to the community and our teachers and our students and developed this vision of the graduate and the board pushed us to have this integrated approach and not our traditional content goals. And you just think nine years later, how extraordinary all of this is and I'm just very proud and excited and I want to just give Kim a, like, just a moment to just, because this, so much of this work has been led by Kim and I'm just, you know, just thrilled.
Yes. Oh, I couldn't say it any better, Kathy, but I will just add something that I noticed as you were speaking is also a hallmark of the way we do our work in Farmington and that is, we don't just look inside ourselves and talk to each other. All of you, you talked about looking out at other districts and other places and going there and talking with students and talking with teachers and examining other programs of study. And we're always looking for those new ideas and new ways to grow our practice. So that, I think, is also just exemplary of how we do our work here in Farmington. And the other thing I wanted to mention is just how obvious it is that you are a team. And I know that the entire building leadership team of department leaders at the high school, they click, they support each other, they enjoy working together, and they lift each other up. And in doing so, they provide extraordinary experiences for our students. So, well done. It was just a joy to listen to you talk about your work.
And thank you to the board, all of your support. You know, really, this is the end result and our students really are, you know, are best evidence of the great work that goes on in the district and all of the teachers that work with all our department leaders as well. I mean, this is just, you know, the collective work of many, many people. And you also heard throughout, we asked students, we asked students, and that student voice and their feedback is part of the work as well. So thank you.
Oh, yeah, Kristi.
I just want to say, I mean, I definitely noticed how much you all love your jobs and I appreciate that. And the thing that struck out the most to me is that you're talking about, you know, catering to all different learners. I mean, I have two children that are going to be, one's coming next year and the other's two years behind. They couldn't be more different in the way that they learn and I like that you're prepared for both of them and I appreciate that, like, truly do. So, good job.
Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda, 5B, Westwoods and IAR report card update.
So Ted Donahue, the principal of IAR, and Alicia Bowman, principal of Westwoods Upper Elementary School, are here to provide updates to our 5-8 report cards. Welcome. I'm going to start things off a bit. Just provide a little context. Because periodically, we do revise our report cards to reflect current practice and our most up-to-date standards in every content area. And so we know that the report card itself is an important communication tool for parents. It helps them to understand where their children are in terms of their progress toward meeting these standards. And it's also just a very important tool in our, maintaining our supportive home-school partnership with parents. Before they begin, I want to revisit something that I know you've seen before, but I think it, it's important to remember that as we think about report cards, we are talking about the assessment practices that underlie how we arrive at those grades or those performance levels. And these mastery-based principles guide all of our work when we think about student-engaged assessment practices and developing, you know, I just will remind you that, you know, the subtitle of this book, Leaders of Their Own Learning, is Student Engaged Assessment Practices. So we've learned so much in the last two to three years about how to help students really become leaders of their own learning, to be self-directed and resourceful in their learning, and to think of assessment not as a test done to me as the student and a grade as something someone else gives to me, but rather, an assessment is an opportunity to reflect and see where I am and see what goals I need to set. And grades are reflective of performance at a moment in time, but we don't want students or children to think, well, that's the end of the road for me. We want them to see that it is a moment in time and that I, you know, I'm developing this growth mindset where I know I can continue to persist in learning and extending my learning. And so report cards are just a part of a much larger system. And so Alicia and Ted are going to talk a little bit about how that's working at each of their schools and how they too, much like the department leaders, have engaged their faculty in looking at other models and other places and thinking about what the research is telling us is best practice and where they feel they are along this process of moving toward full implementation of a mastery-based grading system.
Thanks, Kim. So I was equally as excited to listen to the high school, I think, as an elementary principal, but also as a mother, but I heard the same common themes and things we talk a lot about at the elementary level now moving up to the high school, like more flexible pathways, clarity of standards, integration of content and co-teaching, student choice, small groups and intervention. So I think it's really, we're at an exciting time in Farmington. So, if you don't mind hitting it. So at Westwoods, our goals, when we're thinking about moving towards mastery, we are a two-year school and our goal is to create coherence and clarity in our assessment practices, connect our practices with our beliefs for elementary learners, continue to focus on student learning and feedback, and supporting the student-engaged assessment practices that Kim referred to, that we've been working on for many years now. As most of you know, because you've been through Westwoods, we are a two-year school that originally started about 16 years ago and we've kept our report card pretty much the same, give or take, over the years. So, as we've been working as a faculty, I won't go through all the things we've done. I used this too, as I was working with our faculty, but essentially, we've done a lot of work. We've built a common vision, aligning our practices as a school and then also as the middle of elementary, upper elementary, IAR, so ensuring that we're aligned with our colleagues. And similar to what Kim said and the department leaders, we have been reading research about best practice, we're constantly cross-referencing with core documents and looking to other districts for their, you know, what they're working on. So, these are just, this is some of the work that we did as a faculty early on. Remember, we're elementary school. So as we were building our vision of what does it mean to support students along the road to mastery, you can see one group made a little student on a bike and there's the coach giving feedback. And if you want to hit the next one, Veronica, this is the idea that the sky's the limit. But essentially, as we continue to build our vision, I wanted to make sure teachers and students were all, were equally as clear as to- as to where we're headed. So, this year, we have really looked at kind of the last part, which is thinking about our reporting system when we think about communicating with parents. We have many systems in place, but we know that our report card is one key component. So, now that we have the common vision, and we've been working on our assessment practices for years, which are listed there, we've been collaborating across the district in various ways. And actually, most recently, today, we had Nicole Richmond, who is here this evening, come to speak to the Westwoods teachers about where the high school is, because part of the vision is understanding where kids are going, and so helping teachers to know, oh, this is what it looks like. And she said, you know, it kind of feels funny talking to you about standards-based grading and assessment practices, because you're the elementary school, and you know this really well, but it's important to be able to see the big picture and know where kids are headed. And that was another piece of our work today. So, where we are now is, we have, we worked in our February PD days to create a revised report card, and we're in the process of getting feedback and in the revision process. So it wasn't ready to share with you quite yet, but we'll be there. So our plan for next year is we'll continue to have learner expectations and effort on our report card. We will have some minor revisions to our standards, but essentially, pretty much the same. We'll continue to use the same proficiency levels that we do in elementary school of exceeds, meets, near, and below. We will no longer be reporting whether a student meets end-of-year standard. The thinking behind that is, we report on standards, so it's very clear whether a student is meeting those standards at the end of the year. So to now say that, do these standards mean more than the others? No, we have the essential standards there, and it's very clear whether they're meeting them, exceeding them, near or below. So coming up with an overall whether they meet in math doesn't give us any additional information about how a student's performing. And we will no longer have traditional letter grades in the sixth grade. We've had them, we inherited them and kept them from middle school, and in a two-year school, it is a challenge to have two different reporting systems. And when we think about students over the two years and the progression, and when we look at rubrics, and how we support students, it no longer makes sense at our level to have two different reporting systems. So we're shifting to one. And that's where we are. And we are also very excited, because it's created a lot of clarity in our school, and it allows us to do things, it helps us to focus on the learner, how are we going to support all students to get to where we want them to be, how are we going to support the students who are there already? So we're not spending time on practices that don't help us with creating learners.
Thank you, Alicia. Any questions?
So I think this is great. I fully support this. I want to help in any way that we can in getting the word out, and making sure there isn't any confusion.
Yep.
Or surprise.
Yes.
Seems to be a theme tonight.
Uh-huh.
Because I think that it's important for people to remember, it's elementary school.
Yep.
I have never been asked what my grade point average was in sixth grade.
No.
And I think that it's important for anyone who moved to town after Westwoods was built to remember that we used to have K through five, and six used to be in the middle school, like you said.
Right, right.
And so I guess my question is, what is your plan on getting this out to parents? And do the kids know yet, or like?
Well, we haven't said anything to students yet, in terms of fifth graders becoming sixth graders, because fifth graders are very used to this, this is what they know. So we haven't made any big announcement. I think part of, and we do have, we've had, we've been working closely as not only middle pathways, but upper pathways too, because we want parents to be informed. We don't want it to become, come as a surprise, or feel secretive, or anything like that. So part of our work behind the scenes right now is getting the report card to a place that we're ready, but also getting our, kind of our assessment guidelines ready, so we can explain to parents, this is why. So the document that Kim shared with you, last year, we had created our own Westwoods principles, and then at the same time, Kim was creating hers, and then it was kind of like, well, wait, we're creating the same thing. So instead, we gave feedback to Kim, and really, a lot of what's on there really came from the work of Westwoods teachers. So as far as to answer your question with the communication, it was creating our internal clarity, so that we can be clear when we're explaining it to parents and students. I think students are probably the ones who know best, and probably could explain it to the parents. So we're trying to think about what are the right ways? Like, does it make sense to explain at the end of this year? Does it make sense to explain at the kickoff of next year? We're certainly open to your thoughts.
I think it makes sense to explain it as many times as possible.
I know. It is, because even...
And keep explaining.
Right.
Then just keep explaining.
I understand. No, I do, because you can't over-communicate. Just when you were talking about the math pathways, I'm thinking, gosh, we send that out in fifth grade. And I understand, as a parent, and, you know, it comes in different ways, and we just, at different times, depending on where we are in the work. So, yes, we can communicate, and communicate again, and I think probably, a captive audience is curriculum night, but it probably shouldn't be the first time that that is shared, so...
I mean, I would think a big, the biggest group, like you said, that's going to be impacted, aren't going to be the, the people whose oldest kid is fifth grade or younger aren't going to know any different. I mean, that's going to be fine, I would think, because that's what they know. And I don't know any parents who are clamoring for their children to get letter grades, or be pigeonholed into a certain feeling about themselves in sixth grade. I mean, they're little, they're 11, you know? So I think that the problem you're going to see, if any, is the parents who have had kids go through, and then they're expecting this, and then they don't see it.
Right, right. Exactly. Yep, and that I understand, so...
So that must be data that's easy to get somehow, of specific parents, I don't know.
I appreciate what we're talking about here is consistent, what we're trying to accomplish, you know, at the high school, and bringing it down into the, into Westwoods. You can see a lot of the alignment of what's happening here with what we're trying to do at the high school. But I want to be perfectly frank with you, this is the first I've heard of this, and I have some reservations. And I haven't quite figured out what they exactly are, this is my gut reaction. You indicate that they will no longer be reporting end-of-year standards as part of the regular report card? Or is that, so if I'm getting my report card in November, or in March, I won't know if my student is making year-end standard? So can you explain that, please?
Sure. So in the past, what you would see on the report card is, in reading, at the end, so you would see how they did in the fall, winter, spring, on each of the standards, exceeds, meets, near, below. And say there was five standards in reading. And then overall, you would see, did they meet end-of-year standard in reading? Although, we show you in the standards whether they met the standards. So it's almost like a...
A yes, no.
But Bill, I mean, just to tail off that, I had the same sort of reservation, which was, you're in the best position to aggregate up those various standards into an end-of-the-year or not met standard.
Well, I see, I'm speaking with perspective...
Not a parent to make that assessment, I guess.
100%.
Yeah.
So, but, so, when you're reporting on the standards, you're saying, so for example, just if a standard is something like, you know, reads with interpretation, written response to reading, so you're saying whether Alicia met that standard, the next standard, the standard, so you know whether I met the end-of-year standards or not, because they're all repeated? They're all listed right there?
Okay, so...
So then, so then, they would be summed up in this holistic, but it's almost like saying again to a child, no, you didn't meet overall, when it's already clear that you didn't meet some of the standards, or, and maybe you met some, or you're near on some. Does that make sense?
I mean, yeah, it's going to be your job to explain it to the parent community. That's how I look at it. I mean, I understand what you're saying, and it makes sense in that.
But...
If you have, if you have three consecutive report cards that show a child in relation to standard in various, in whatever that is, M, E, or N, right? The parent who's going to read that report card is going to have to kind of understand what that means. You know what I mean? I mean, I understand what you're trying to say. What I'm saying is, is that has to be explained in a way that parents are going to stand. And here's why, I offer this as context. I think there's only two of us that were here, maybe three of us that were here, and we rolled out the mastery level assessments at the high school. And I remember distinctly the response of the parent community at that time. And I understand, this is a six, this is really one grade level, it's not four, so, you know, so I get that. But when we're, when we're talking about any kind of change like this, I think there really needs to be a sensitivity to the parent community, as, I mean, we're saying it's great, it's awesome. People are going to want to understand why. Okay? It's, it's one thing for us to say here at the board table, that we all understand, because we spend our time, we read the material, we get it. But the parent community is not just going to take that word for it, they're going to want to understand why. And it goes to this idea about how the students are, you know, the kind of, you know, we talk about them being the leaders of their own learning, and self, they assess themselves, and, you know, they are, they are sixth graders, you're right, they're 11. And it's really crucial that the teachers in those classrooms, especially in the co-taught classrooms, work together to make sure they're collaboratively communicating with parents, especially at conferences, what's happening in that student's development and growth. Because what I don't want to have happen is, and you have the co-taught classrooms, one teacher who isn't familiar with the other stuff that's being taught in that, to that particular child, to say to a parent, I don't know, that's not my stuff that I'm handling. So, I offer that to you as some thought, because that can be very frustrating for parents to have, to have the student led, because at sixth grade, the stakes are a little different, it's not fourth grade. And so I'm 100% in support of the concept of what we're trying to do here. I just think it needs to be executed in a way that's absolutely clear as to what's being expected, not just of the student, but of the teachers that are going to be doing it, and that the parents are fully appreciated, fully apprised of what we're trying to do. Because that's my, that's my concern. Because you talked about internal clarity with respect to, you know, how you guys are doing it. I want to make sure that the parents are clear. That's really what it comes down to, so, you know...
Well, I want to, too.
Right, right.
So I'm open...
I'm not suggesting you don't, I'm not suggesting you don't, I'm just saying that. I just want to make sure, and, you know, I will talk offline, I don't want to waste the board's time on this, but I do have a lot more questions we can talk about afterwards. Thank you.
I mean, one of the things that we try to do is bring it to the board...
Right, for feedback.
...as soon as decisions are made at the teacher level.
Absolutely.
So rather than communicate it out to parents, first, we come to the board, and we want your feedback and reaction, and then that gives us that, you know, some, okay, this is something that, you know, we kind of go through the board first and communicate it to you, so, just so I don't, I don't want anyone to think that there's been, you know, a lot of, you know, like, oh, this was in the works.
No.
This is part of a process that we, that teachers go through, and Alicia went through. It's been a long process. We've been engaged in mastery-based learning for a long time, and we've taken our time. We definitely learned that we can't go fast with this, we have to take our time, and we also have to build an understanding among our faculty, so that they feel completely comfortable when we make these shifts. So I just want to make it clear that, you know, we're coming to the board because we're at a point where we're ready to make the shifts. At Westwoods does not mean we're not going to have letter grades in the upper grades, that's something that I will hear, you know, that is a question that sometimes I get, does this signal that we're going in a different direction?
Well, that was my last question.
In the high school? And, or, you know, at IAR? And we are saying, no, it just, that we, it is an upper elementary school, and I think when Westwoods was first created, there were some things that they wanted to keep in the sixth grade, one of which was grades, and they didn't want to make that switch then. But now we are truly an upper elementary school. And we want to align those practices and the students. It's like this very interesting kind of structure that was in place, and Alicia's worked with her faculty to say, does this structure still work for us? But I do appreciate all of your feedback. I do, and I know Alicia does, and we will...
Definitely. Because we've had lots of conversations about...
Start communicating. But we definitely wanted to get the board's...
Well, I mean, the one thing I can say with great confidence is, you're super intelligent, super smart, and know how to handle this. So I'm not like worried about how it's going to work out.
Well, I...
No, 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 I have great confidence that that's done.
No, I appreciate it.
I just, I just, I remember my feelings and certain experiences I had in that process with the high school certainly, and then just feedback I had from my time in Westwoods with my peers and friends, and talking to people about what, you know, and these are the kind of things that...
Sure.
...that come to mind.
Thank you.
And Kristi?
I just have to say, I actually kind of like that idea that the grading is going to be the same in the two, because I think that that does make it easier for parents in a way. I mean, it is, it does make sense to me, I guess, is what I'm trying to say, to have the same grading for the school, fifth and sixth grade, both grades. But once again, I also say, just as long as it's communicated, obviously, that's something that, I know, comes up all the time, and it's...
Yep, absolutely. And I mean it when I say I'm open to ideas, that you would have many of your parents in my school?
No, I think that I do, I think...
Or have been?
I like the idea that it's the same for the school. I mean, fifth and sixth grade is the same school. I real, you know, I didn't even realize, you know, the whole reason behind it until, you know, now, why it was like that. But, you know, the reality is, fifth and sixth grade is Westwoods, you know? So it makes sense for everybody that the report cards would be the same, but of course, it's, all comes down to just making sure that it's communicated clearly.
And Alicia, just, for me, getting back to the end-of-the-year standards...
Sure.
I'm just trying to understand this, because let's say you take an academic discipline such as math, and there's five, and you gave me on the report card, let's, five component parts to math, and they meet three of the five.
Yes.
How does a parent know whether they met end-of-the-year standards? Are they all...
Well, they didn't, because they didn't meet them all.
If they, so if they met, so if they met, you have to meet them all, okay?
Yes.
And everybody knows that, that, oh, you have to meet them all?
Yes.
You can do four of the five and still meet standard.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Because as we went through the process, Chris, of refining the report card and gaining clarity, then we were saying, well, if these are the essential standards that a fifth grader needs to know in math, why are we now saying that this standard is less important than the other standard?
Yeah, no, that's what I'm trying to...
And we were cut, we used to rack our brains, like, what is, is it two out of the four? Is it five? No, these are, we believe that all students need to show mastery towards these standards, and if we believe that, so, that was really the thinking behind it.
And we have to clearly communicate that in order, you know, for a parent to be sure, you know, meeting standard at...
Yes, means meeting, absolutely. And that would be, that is part of what is on the report card, where you explain the...
Okay, great.
Yes. But those are, this is helpful.
Yeah.
So I was, now all the report cards are, they come electronically.
Yes.
So, I mean, maybe one way to not have to recap everything at the end and say, yes or no, they met standard, is you could, it is defined on there about meeting standard, but, so, since it's electronic, you could have, like, anything under a meets be a different color or something, like red, I don't know, that's bad, but...
Yeah, yeah.
Green, I don't know. And then maybe, like, have them click on it, a parent can click on it for further information, like, your child did not, your student did not meet standard in this, therefore, they're not considered meeting standard. I mean, that's a computer program, I mean, that wouldn't be that probably difficult, although Matt's not here, so I don't know how difficult it is.
Right, right.
For us, impossible for him to...
Right, for us, yeah, for me, it seems very difficult, but, so I don't know, I just think that maybe something a little more about, like, if you're under the meets...
And that, that, I don't think, that's not a have-to, like, we could easily check that.
I mean, I know...
Still, you know, if that creates clarity for parents, it's not a big deal. If, you know, if it's listed, and there's still that box that says that, that's not...
Because sometimes when it's all the same color, it's very, you just look at it, you're like, all right, well, I have one in, or whatever, I don't know. And you don't really think it through.
Yeah.
So if it was something that was drawn to your attention, I mean, obviously, at the end of the year, it wouldn't have to be every time, but if it's drawn to your attention, then, or maybe it should be every time, then it's drawn to the parent's attention. Look at this one, you know?
Yep.
I don't know. That's just an idea.
Okay.
It's also, I would just say, not a gatekeeper, so not meeting all standards in math doesn't keep you in sixth grade until you do.
Oh, no, right, yeah.
So I think at the end of the year, the yes, no, I hear what you're saying, and so it's giving us something to think about, but it's also, the important information is there. What about math is your student missing, or still needing some support in, and what things are your, are your students, or is your student really good at? But the yes, no, almost makes it sound like if it's a no, you're not moving on, and in fact, you are.
Chris, just one thing, one thing you can do, and just thinking about it, is changing how comments are... how comments are expressed.
That's true, right.
You know, you get a lot of pat kind of student, you know, kind of comments and really kind of require the teachers to develop thorough comments about what's happening to kind of address what you just said.
Yeah, right. That would be helpful.
We've talked about that.
You know, what it sounds like to me is, because I will help out with marketing if I can.
Or communications.
But, you know, because I've had students go through too, and you don't always get a, you know, you see their report card, as Liz was saying, you know, it is a little simplified. But when you say clarity, maybe this, maybe our new approach with still reporting out what your child needs to learn, what the expectations are, and what standards, having the actual standards being listed out, what they know, that, it's like an information highway that could open up for parents on their child's learning. Even, it seems like this is an enriched report.
Like given it to them at the beginning of the year.
Yeah, it's an enriched report card that they could truly, you know, benefit the partnership in their child's learning. So, to me, it's a hu, it would, you know, more information is better. And you're right, we don't need that, the, you know, and I never care, my son was the first sixth grader at Westwoods. I didn't really care if they got grades or not. You want to know how they're doing, what, you know, and this just seems to me that, you know, to say to parents, this is going to be a more enriching view, you know, so you can partner in your child's education. That's what I'm taking from it.
Write that sentence down.
I think another conversation with parents down the road would be getting some feedback on, like, our formal reporting structures, including the times that we report, and seeing if those still fit, because they're the ones we've had since the school has opened, meaning, like, when we give progress reports.
I can't, I can't, it's long. I am, I am, I am stymied that we are just getting, has it ever been thought to do this before and fit, I mean, or maybe that's a bad question.
Ellen?
It's taken so long.
Well, I think we.
We've talked about it for a very long time.
Very long time.
But we wanted it, we wanted to make sure it was thoughtful, it was aligned with our practices, that we were making decisions that made sense, not just, you know, so, a long, long time.
And also, you know, engaging the faculty and the conversation.
Absolutely, yep.
You know, that to me is a really important part of it as well.
Good, all right. All right, thank you, Alicia. I appreciate it.
Thank you, and I really do appreciate the feedback. And I'm, I would welcome additional feedback or ideas. So, thank you.
So, good evening, and Ted Donahue, principal at IAR.
Also starring, also starring Ted Donahue.
I am here.
You're going to pass now?
To swear to you that we are keeping letter grades at the secondary level. We will remove them over my, from my cold, dead hand. No, we, you know, we recognize, you know, Alicia and I, we're both in the middle and we straddle two worlds. And our job is to take students coming up from Westwoods and prepare them for high school and beyond. So, we always look at things in that way. And we've done a lot of the same work we've been working on as Westwoods and as the high school, because we certainly don't want to have a structure where our students go into ninth grade and then hit a wall and say, we've never, we don't know what this means, we don't know how we're performing. So, we're kind of looking at both, at both sides of the, of the age spectrum. What I thought I would share, we're going to make a change to our report card. So, let me explain, the 20, the left-hand side is the current report card, 2017-18. So, currently, the report cards are broken down by subject. There are trimester, trimester letter grades, and then, at the end, there is an overall letter grade for the year. Within each course, there are two to four report card standards. And then, there are learner expectations. Those are the skills and dispositions that students need to demonstrate in order to really demonstrate mastery of the content standards. So, those are things like demonstrating respectful behavior, demonstrating academic responsibility, collaborating well with others, and as we work on promoting growth mindset, persisting in developing quality work. And that was a change that we made last year to make our learner expectations, it used to be referred to as an effort grade, much more robust, and I think to give a much deeper profile into how students are doing in each of their, in each of their classes. So, the change for next year really would be taking the report card standards that are currently listed on the report card and housing them in Power School. And the reason why we want to do that is because, as Kim pointed out, the report card really is a snapshot, a picture in time. We want it clear, easy to read, but there's a lot that goes into those grades. And there's a wealth of information, as Ellen pointed out, that we think is really important, that parents kind of dig in into that, thinking from a parent's perspective, when they see a B, what does that really tell you? Except that it's not an A and it's better than a C. But as we move toward mastery, we're identifying the most essential skills that students need to be able to demonstrate to be successful in each course. And we feel like we need to, we need to report on those, because a B is very unclear to parents, to students, to teachers, to subsequent year teachers, about what, how that B is composed. So, we want to put all of that detail into, into Power School. We think by putting all the standards on the report card, we would end up with a very, very large report card that I don't think a lot of people would have the time to be able to really, to really dig into. We do feel, however, that the learner expectations, and Veronica, can you go to the next slide? So, the learner expectations would continue to be reported because we think that's a really good entry point for parents to have a meaningful conversation with students about how did, how did you get these grades? Because if the student isn't demonstrating academic responsibility by being prepared and doing the outside work that's necessary for success, oftentimes, that will show up in their overall performance. So, you know, we're hoping that this change really keeps the focus on learning, less on grades, really promoting, as Kim showed before, our, our vision of mastery-based learning in Farmington, that standards will drive all, all of the reporting that we want to make. We want to get to a point where eventually, we're not grading on assignments, we're grading on standards. And we feel like we need to make this shift in order to make that happen. So, I don't know if anyone has any questions.
Any questions for Ted?
Is there, are there any? Do we have any data on the amount of parents that actually go into Power School and look at it?
You know, it's funny you ask that because we had a faculty meeting today when we were talking about this, and one of our teachers asked the exact same question. We have the ability to look at individual parents. There's a tab that we can see how often they've, they've checked. I don't know if we can generate a report off of that. And I believe, I was told, but I'm not sure if this is correct, that oftentimes, a parent who has a child at the high school, their Power School accounts are linked together so that they accessed, through looking at their child, they accessed a parent account for a student at Westwoods. It may not show up, but I'm not sure. So, that's something I think we would want to, we would want to talk to Matt about because.
It does. I can tell you that it does. If I can get the high school, I can get the high school, Power School, my two children's accounts are linked on Power School.
Right, but I'm wondering if that would show up.
Oh, as me looking into.
You have accessed him, even though you have, but whether it would count.
Other things, so I asked Matt about this recently. We absolutely can, but there's several factors. So, one is parents actually logging in. And what more the problem is that sometimes parents can't remember their passwords.
Oh, yeah.
Students have just given the parent their own password. So, students' own passwords. So, we wouldn't be able to tell if they're.
That's true.
Based on.
Or a student.
Well, I don't log in. I just have mine, I mean, it's on right now.
Yeah, mine's on all the time. Mine's on all the time.
I check it.
That's real time.
Matter of fact, I think I'm going to check it right now.
If I don't log in, it's just there.
Now that we're talking about it, excuse me for a minute.
The other part of it is that some parents also sign up for automatic emails. So, we can also, we also know who signed up for it, and then they can choose daily, you know, weekly, monthly, minutely.
Automatic emails of what? Oh, wow.
I think there's a lot of choices.
Well, I think being that connected to Power School is problematic.
Wait a minute, hold on. You can sign up for automatic emails?
Ups and downs.
On Power School?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't know that. I look at it all the time.
And some people will call and say, why am I getting these?
It's like a stock ticker.
I, I'm just practicing for the next one.
But again, if a parent didn't know their login, they can certainly always call and get it, but really, a lot of times, they'll just ask their child, like, I'm still logging under yours. And then, we wouldn't have completely 100% accurate data on that. But we do know that the percentage of parents who do check that is very high.
Okay. Well, I'm just, if the information's going to be on Power School, you want to make sure people are using it.
Absolutely. Veronica, could you go back to the previous page? So, we've expanded the, that little purpose box a little bit to make reference to that. And I've talked to Catherine Terry Savage, and I don't know if this is possible, but because the report cards are emailed out, I'd love to be able to have, where it's bolded with the link, I'd love to be able to have that as a hyperlink that you could then just click and you'd be brought right to Power School.
Yeah, that'd be perfect.
Well, that's a great idea.
It answers all the concerns in a way that it's completely transparent at that point about what you're trying to do, the information there, the data's there for the parent that wants it. It's, you know, you're not cluttering the report card in a way that makes it like, you know, the one on the left, you know, with all those straight As, I was going to say, is that my son's? But, um, no, probably, Veronica, probably not. No, but I like the idea of having that. That is, that strikes me as really a modern type of approach to the report card.
Well, I think too, I'm not sure if parents print off the report card or if they just look at it. And I think, you're right, it'd be kind of one-stop shopping electronically to be able to do that.
Right.
You can access it anywhere.
Yeah.
True.
All right. Liz?
I think that if parents print it off or not, it's depending on their age.
And the size of the refrigerator.
Some people like paper. But, so why, is there a reason why, I mean, we can't, Westwoods doesn't use Power School? Well, you do internally, but the parents can't see it, right? So, I mean, that might be a way to get more information to parents at the Westwoods level if there was something similar, rather than cluttering up the report card.
Right, right. Oh, in terms of clicking on the student to see more.
Yeah, in terms, right, to see more, to explain more about what it means if you don't meet all of the standards, to explain how your child is actually doing in school, because I think that is the most important part. Like, like Ellen said, I mean, I really, in sixth grade, the grades are the least of my concerns. I just want to know how he's doing.
Right.
So, where's the effort? That, Power School might be an answer, but I don't know if there's a reason why we don't do Power School for the parents for Westwoods, so.
Well, I think there is, and also for students, I think, you know. We don't want, yeah.
Well, the students know, but I'm just saying for the parents to see it, like, just link to it at the report card level. But I don't know if that's even possible to do.
It might be at the report card.
Yeah.
Right. Because I think teachers at the elementary level aren't thinking quite the same way that secondary-level teachers are. So, if I'm a seventh-grade teacher, I have 115 students. I need to put in data that I can reference back and look at in order to eventually look across and say, how is that student doing? If I have 20 students in my classroom, I've got folders and portfolios and exemplars of student work, and that assessment of learning is happening, you know, sort of fluidly and interactively over time. So, they're not entering little data points along the way in the same way so that a parent could check Power School every five days and say, well, how's his grade doing now? Or how's his standard doing now? So, that's why we haven't really opened it up at Westwoods, but maybe at report card time, it could open up and you could see more in-depth information.
Right, well, it's just a good tool to have. But that, what you just said is a perfect example of why Westwood should be on the non-grade level, because it is very different. And when you go to a conference, you see portfolios and you see stories and you see.
Right.
It's not the same as in the middle school or the high school. So, all right, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, Alicia, Ted.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, next item on the agenda, 5C, Engage Learning Update.
So, we have many items that were included in Engage Learning, Co-Creating Curriculum at East Farms, Noel Wallace School Math Night, West District's Schools Fourth Grade Reporters. They actually created the Principal's Newsletter this month. And then, Westwoods welcomed former students as guest presenters. The Women in Business, Farmington High School's Business Department, run by one of our teachers at the high school, presented at Westwoods in the last couple of weeks. And then, IAR celebrated their spring musical, Peter Pan, and we have some board members whose children were stars in the production. So, just wonderful updates.
As always.
Yes.
Thank you. Next item, 5D, Professional Appointments. Nothing this month. Okay, next item on the agenda, 6A, Unfinished Business Budget Impact Budget Update. Vince?
The, real quickly, the second town hearing was last night, and we only had one question. It was a, it was a question on the bonding questions, no questions in regards to operating. And next is not next, not next week, week after?
The 16th.
16th, thank you. Chris, next day, date in our budget process. The, we just, Beth Haber and I just closed the month of March a couple of days ago, and later in the agenda, the board's going to be considering the February financial statement. But a couple of my comments right now are going to be, because I have this very new information, since we just closed March 2, that we, we are seeing some continued pressure in the area of salaries with paraprofessionals. We've had to put in place in the district some additional paraprofessional support. So, that line is going to, is trending not as good as it has been trending for this year. We are also seeing some new pressure on our evaluations and testing line, and this is special services lines. So, there's going to be some new pressure in that, in those lines. And again, even additional special education nursing needs are occurring within the district, specifically with additional special education nursing support on some of our transportation situations with children in district. So, those are some items that are impacting the budget, the current budget. There's a couple of revenue and grant updates that are, I'm very pleased to be talking, sharing with the board. One of them, Superintendent Greeter, in November, had, and myself, had both seen that the state of Connecticut was putting out a competitive security grant, another round of competitive security grant offerings. And Kathy had urged us to apply for it, and I think you had remembered some of the things that our assessments are security. that our assessments, our security assessments, prior to my being in the business office, that had occurred in the district a few years back, specifically around the fact that there had been mentioned that the town and the school system think about improving exterior lighting at our schools. And because the town just did this, a very significant project, which I think everybody's aware about in the fall, and actually, all the lighting project has been completed and has been paid for. That was a piece of our grant, how we wrote towards this security grant. So we applied and we put in close to $1 million worth of projects that the town was, has done this past fall or is doing. And Farmington did win, and we now have been awarded a grant, a reimbursement grant of up to $300,643.99. So we'll begin right away with trying to get that reimbursement back into the town of Farmington's coffers. The Open Choice final tuition revenue payment just came in, and I think I had mentioned at the last board meeting that it was, we, Beth and I have been projecting a certain amount of money, but it has come in a little bit higher than what we expected. So in total, the Open Choice tuition that's come into the board is $830,101. That's about $24,000 higher than what we had been projecting. Open Choice Support, that Assistant Superintendent Kim Nguyen manages, that grant, did receive a bonus grant payment. And we were notified a little over a week ago that the district is receiving a bonus of $40,200 in grant funds, which is a terrific thing. And I'm also gonna mention something that I'm still looking into, because I do not know exactly what very long ago school project has been, it's audited and now completed, but the town of Farmington received on March 22, $189,121, closing out a school construction project that we estimate, myself and Joe Swecki estimate, may have been from 20 years ago. So the, the town has received the reimbursement and two payments that's in the town's coffers.
With interest?
That I'm not sure about. But I think Kathy had also heard that there's a lot of effort within the State Department right now to try to complete and finish these, some of these items that have been audited from long ago and to close them out. So that's a good news thing that's come in.
Question.
That's what I...
Ooh.
Andrea, we'll go around the table, Andrea.
Is there any way to track, like, where that money came from?
I myself...
Or not where, but why?
Yeah, yeah. Well, exactly. I, it is not one of, I, when I took over as Business Administrator, there were three recently done school construction projects that still had some funds to be reimbursed to the town of Farmington. And I worked towards closing some of those, and I have been successful, myself and Nicole and my office have been successful in closing two of them out in this fiscal year and bringing some money back in. It's reimbursement funds that, at the time of those, for whatever reasons, the state needed further documentation from us to close out those projects and then to give the final payments to the town. This one was not on my radar, to be honest with you. It was not a...
So there was nothing blank?
I myself was not really looking for it. And however, when it did come in and we were alerted in our offices, I went down and saw Joe Swecki, and Joe said he, there are, there, you know, he, the, he is aware, was aware, that there were longstanding audit, you know, audit issues on projects. But I've reached out to the state because, just for closure for myself, I would like to know too exactly what project from long ago this was closing out, and I'm sure the state's gonna respond to me to close it out. So, and when I have that, I'll tell the board, you know, from what project long ago this issue was.
Yep.
You have a question? Okay, Phil?
Well, I think I have a lot of questions. The fact that the town finance manager wasn't surprised, but that you were about this $189,000 item that was subject to an audit, is disappointing that that information was not communicated at any point in the last nine years of my service on the Board of Education, that there was $189,000 sitting out there while we're sitting here cutting curriculum, programs, cutting culinary, all this stuff. This was, this has been sitting there for 20 years, and the financial manager of the town of Farmington, this is not a surprise to him? That's shocking. It's outrageous. I would ask that this issue be brought, we have a joint meeting coming up on May 15, and I would ask that this issue be made as part of that agenda. Because this is the second time in my tenure where money has miraculously been found after a state audit. When we go back to the Westwood project, those a half a million dollars. So tell me again, what's happening over on the town side? You know, they give us a hard time on every penny and every pound. That's now $689,000 in my nine years that's been sitting out there that the finance manager of the town of Farmington was aware of as being subject to some sort of reimbursement to the town, to the Board of Ed. Maybe I'm wrong, but that's basically what I heard tonight. So I look forward to hearing from him, his explanation as to why we got to this place.
And Bill, I'm just gonna say, I want to be very clear about one piece about this. I am still looking into this with the state of Connecticut.
Okay.
And I also certainly should be, and I will, reach out to our former business, the school business administrators for any information.
Like a Mike Ryan or something like that.
Right, yeah, because I would hate to sit here and say that any of my predecessors didn't, I'm sure one of my previous predecessors had some type of knowledge about it. I myself just did not.
No, no, of course not. No, I'm just trying to say that this is just, the fact that you had a conversation with town finance director, and he doesn't, it doesn't sound like he was surprised about this existing out there troubles me. This is the second time it's happened in my nine years on the board. That's all. I really want this addressed with the town council.
No, I agree with 100% with what Bill just stated. I would just still be wondering, after 20 years, Vince, was there something that triggered this audit? What triggered
this after 20 years?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Ellen, I don't know the answer to that, because I have reached out to the state of Connecticut.
So it was nothing that you initiated?
I couldn't, I really can't answer that, because I have, myself and Nicole in my office, have been working with, with the state a lot over the past, specifically the past year. That's why two of the three projects that I know, a project that was at IAR and a project about East Farms Roof Renovations, that are really sitting on the wall behind my desk, you know, on that, where I have all those files from my predecessors. We've been working with them a lot and providing them the information they need to close out those. And those were closed in the past, since this, you know, this, during this fiscal year. And I know that there's, so, and I know we have still one outstanding IAR project that I'm still working on. They've asked us for further information about some things that may not be reimbursable that they're, during their audit process. So I don't know if us talking to them a lot has done this, or if there's just been some change at the state in which they're trying to very close out things right now.
I've been at meetings with DAS, and they have said that they really want to clean everything up, and there are projects that are longstanding projects that have not been reimbursed. So they, I do know that's an effort being made in DAS to address those. It's been communicated to superintendents, you know, in meetings.
So it would be interesting from the other way. I understand that way. It would be interesting, interesting going the other way, how the town of Farmington or our finance director keeps track from the other end. And where was the, you know, where was it lost?
I assume that he wasn't following up on it, first of all, right? So we just need to know...
Well, I would say apparently...
What the sticky point was with it not getting reimbursed, not necessarily that he wasn't following up to it.
But or the follow-up. I would like to know if he was, he obviously was...
Sure, he should, I would like to know if he followed up, how he followed up, when he followed up, how many emails he sent, what correspondence was done, how many phone calls he made.
Yeah.
Because we're gonna talk about his follow-up. I want to know specifically what his follow-up was.
Right. There is a responsibility, however, on my office to do with a school construction project, it is my responsibility on behalf of the board to be following up on these projects. So I definitely, that's why I can...
I hear what you're saying, but...
But this one goes back 20 years.
It was 20 years.
But I do respect that it's 20 years.
So someone has institutional knowledge on the subject that you're not expected to have.
You can't match it to a project.
Okay, yep, absolutely. What'd you say, Ellen? You done?
Yeah, I didn't hear that he was exact on that number. He hasn't been able to identify it to a project yet.
Correct. I have not been able to identify it to a project. That's correct.
I look forward to hearing, I look forward to hearing more clarification.
I will.
And it's not uncommon in an audit practice, I have an auditing background, it's not uncommon in auditing practice that, just like in a statement process, that there's a certain number of years that can transpire before the organization that has the funds has to go back and audit it. So it may be in that.
I'm sure. There's a good explanation. I'm sure there's a good explanation for it.
Okay, Christine?
Questions for you. Last meeting, we heard from Bloom Shapiro, who gave us and the town an all-clean. So are they not tracking this type of reimbursement?
Oh, no. That type of reimbursement is tracked in an audit.
But it was there too.
I'm not, I'm not positive about what year it would have been represented in a past...
But so it wouldn't carry forward?
Exactly. You would think if you don't get it...
I mean, if it was represented in one year, we would expect that it would be carried forward.
And that's, that's a...
So I understand if you don't have the answer.
So 20 years ago, you'd think they would have caught that.
Even if it was that year 19.
20 years ago.
It should have been carried forward.
I have to make sure I understood what you're saying.
We didn't get that yet. We didn't get that yet.
So one more quick question, and this one's for Kim. This isn't related to this. Your bonus payment. Was that merit-based, or was that a surprise, or is there something we can do to help that happen again, or?
I really would like to say it was merit-based, but it was not. I think it had to do with something at the state level where they decided that, you know, they'd really cut our funds so drastically last year, and, you know, we've been very vocal about having to shift, you know, things that we expected to use the funding for. So, you know, all districts received some additional funding based on a formula that relates to the number of students that you have. It's difficult because they're giving it to us now at this point in the year, and it needs to be spent in the next two months and all of that.
Got it.
But we're not going to say no, thank you.
Understood.
You're gonna spend it.
Thank you.
Mark?
Can I say it's kind of, I mean, it's nice to hear that money comes in. I think the last time, I think the one you were referring to is about three years ago.
Or, like, three or four? I remember six years ago, when you first got on.
Yeah, because I remember it was right around St. Patrick's Day.
Yeah, it was, it was.
I just found it surprising that there's no list out there for all the reimbursements that we're waiting for. I mean, these seem like big numbers to be surprised about. I mean, I would think that somebody has a sheet that says, hey, you know, 91, waiting on 20,000.
Carry it forward.
Again, I believe that's the same thing that Christine was just asking me, that it would be represented in the audit. I still need to do research to even determine in what year it was represented in the, in the audit where it would be really called out. So, which I will do.
Okay. I'm just surprised it's just not like a big old sheet on the wall with 500 dollars. Follow-up call, you know, send a letter. Seems like, I don't mean to make light of it, I'm just saying that it's just, you know, seems like a big sum of money that we wouldn't be more on top of looking into.
Right. It is, it is a positive thing, and it has gone back into the town of Farmington's finances now.
Of course, it went to the town side. Of course, it does.
All right. So I have a couple of questions on that. If it were indeed a school construction project, one would assume it was bonded, at $189,000 being given back, probably bonded. How do we find that out? Because if it's bonded, the money has to go to what it was bonded for, because the taxpayers of this town allocated money to a bonding project. You can't just put it in the general fund.
Plus, it's right there.
Well, we don't know what it is.
Understood. We're talking 20 years now.
It could have been, it could have been the thing over there that we're still paying for in this building alone. I mean, we don't know what it's for, right? I mean, so, that's a question. I am flabbergasted at how this is happening again in my short time in following the budget in Farmington. So, you know, $500,000 was put back, we used it for security along with the town. Great, wonderful. Everyone said, hey, how did we lose that money? How did we lose track of it? And here you're saying $189,000 the town lost track of, and...
Well, I'm not, I am not saying the town lost track of it. I'd want to...
But the town lost track of it. You, maybe you didn't say it, but the town lost track of it. There's money that was due to us from a long time ago that the town, you said, wasn't that surprised about. And, by the way, you said there were other things that are out there. So what are those? You said there's other long-term construction projects. So how do we get that money back? And what are they?
So I know, you know, there isn't, I know that there's a website that Vince checks on, you know, projects that are in the process of being audited, and just like Vince said, there are things that we may have thought were reimbursable and are not, and that's through that whole audit process. We go through that. And at times, it takes, I will say, having been here now for nine years, these things take a long time in that you have to provide evidence of everything, and you have to show that, you know, things were paid out and what the scope of the project was. So I know that Vince was referring to like an IAR probably roof project that you're working on right now. And I remember Mike Ryan saying to me many times that even the auditors would say, oh, there are these projects, when are they going to be reimbursed? And, you know, so I know that there is communication back and forth about these things, and there is a way of keeping track of it all. And I think what's really essential is that Vince, you know, go back, get that information, and report it back to the board, just so we have clarification, you know, on that, and...
Right. Because you can tell we're all pretty upset right now.
Right. And so we'll get that clarification.
Get some more information, I think.
Because honestly, I, okay, so $189,000, and if we can't determine where it came from, or if it's not applicable because the bond is paid off, it just goes to the general fund of the town?
Well, the funds have gone to the town.
Okay. And then you said this $300,000 security grant, those funds go to the town?
Yes.
Okay. So now we have over $500,000 in the past few months that have just gone to the town general fund for projects that involve the schools. Is that right?
Well, as far as the security, so in the case of security grants that we receive, we have to pay out first in order to get reimbursed. And the funding that, if you all remember, the funding for the outside lighting, not the inside, the outside lighting for the town and the board is a result, it's, you know, it's like a win-win-win story. And then our grant on top of it is amazing. So I'll take a moment just to go over it, because we should all be proud of it. So we did a performance contract with the town several years ago, which created lots of different projects, updating boilers, all kinds of different things that we did. They were all energy efficiencies that give us savings for years and years to come. And as a result of that, we received rebate money for these energy efficiencies. That rebate money was then shared... That rebate money was then shared between the town and the board, and we got the lion's share of it to do this outside lighting project. So, you know, here is a performance contract, not having to, you know, taxpayers not having to deal with that, and then a lighting project, taxpayers not having to deal with that, and now $300,000 reimbursement from that project. So it's a really incredible situation, and I think that we would still be in discussion with Kathy. You know, we just received this. We would be in discussion with Kathy and Joe, and I'm sure Chris would be in discussion with Nancy about that $300,000, knowing that we have several security projects, you know, that we want to get done. So I, technically, yes, it goes to the town, just like technically the rebates from the performance contract went to the town, but we shared that. So I don't want anyone to think like it's a done deal, we're not sharing, you know, we've had this relationship with the town where we do. We do share, and, you know, we try to do things together to benefit the taxpayers of Farmington. And so I don't want to misrepresent that that $300,000, we're not going to get any of it. I don't know that. We haven't even had a discussion yet with Kathy and Joe, and, you know, between town council and the board.
I understand, and I think it's great that the whole outdoor lighting and how it happened, and then getting a grant.
Just want to celebrate it.
But no, it's great. You should celebrate it. But you, the board, the schools applied for the grant, for the security grant, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So the schools apply for the grant, and then the town gets the money.
Well, no, we don't know yet.
No, we know. The town got the money. So now we have to ask them for the money to share it with us. They have the money. They're going to get it. Then if they're going to share it, okay, but.
Because I just signed.
Well, they have the $189,000, so.
The $300,000 has to be put in for reimbursed.
Yeah.
But in order to get a share of that money, and I, look, hey, things could go well, and they could share it, but we have to ask them to share. It's their money.
Well, it technically, I mean, many things technically go to a town, a municipality from the state. And there are arrangements we've had for years. An example of that is ECS goes to the town and remains with the town. That is one thing that's just been historical here. Other towns, that's not the case. But in Farmington, that is the way it is. On the security side, I think it does make sense that it be reinvested in security. I think that that would be, you know, a best practice when we receive grant funding for security. And that's what we would, you know, talk to Kathy and Joe about, and just, you know, have that discussion with them. And I think, given, you know, just the number of projects that we have, when it comes to security, it would make sense. We have the Friar Reports that can give a list of projects that we're ready to do. And that's also the beauty of having those K-8 facility reports, that we can easily, when money becomes available, be able to give a list of projects that could be done.
Right. I just, yeah, it's just that in order to get it, it doesn't just automatically come to the board. It's the town's money, and in order to do something like that, there has to be some kind of ask, meeting, and then they have to vote on it.
Usually, it's a discussion that we would have with, you know, with Kathy and Joe, and, you know, speak to them about that. I'm not necessarily thinking, you know, that it could be something where it gets placed into a capital account. You know what I mean? There are things that can be done, you know, just through our discussions, and then notification to everyone that that's how it's being done.
All right. I just remember the Westwoods money, and there was a big vote on that with a lot of discussion.
Sure, sure.
So I just, I'm remembering how that went.
I think, but I want to be clear, especially people that are watching at home, that, that, it's not crazy, Michelle, because you weren't here when it went down, and how it went down, and how the schools were impacted because of that. So I think what you see tonight is really just a frustration of what appears to be the second time in eight years of found money after an audit, and the recognition or the realization that whatever that money is, that's going to be coming back, that is essentially money that was dedicated to the school system. Okay? You weren't at those meetings at 3:00 in the morning at Westwoods, when we had students and parents and teachers coming, begging us to keep programs, and we had to cut them.
Are you talking to me?
Yeah, I'm talking to anybody that's listening, really. Okay? So when we find $500,000 out of Westwoods, or $189,000 drops out of the sky, I'm not so worried about the $300,000. I get how that process works. That doesn't trouble me so much. That's frustrating for me, because I have to now, you know, address people in our community. Well, why are these things happening? Why did these things happen? Why can't we have a culinary program? Why can't we do all these other amazing things? Because we've been asked time and time again to basically find ways to cut. And we have the roof problems we had this year. Find ways to cut. Find ways to make do. The school system like Farmington, I frankly think that's outrageous. So I look forward to getting more information. You're right. We need more information before we draw any conclusions. I think that's fair. But I'm also absolutely comfortable with saying it's fair for me to be very disappointed and very frustrated at how this played out. I look forward to hearing more information.
All right, I get it. And Vince, not to beat a dead horse, but to say I'm shocked is an understatement. So I appreciate your efforts, your continued efforts to work with us and the town to identify anything and everything that's out there. And hopefully, as we move forward, we'll get some answers as to this, because it is just shocking that this bill, say, just fell out of the sky and it tore, you know, so, but thank you very much.
I just want to, it has nothing to do with what we talked about, but I did have a note here, just so that we're all reminded, May 15th, we do have a joint town board meeting in the auditorium at FHS at 7:00 PM, and we are going to discuss the FHS facility comprehensive needs of our facility, which is outlined in our statement of needs. So just want to remind everyone.
Okay, thank you, Vince. Sorry.
Talk about a budget impact.
Percy was Alicia.
You were so happy to share your news.
Yeah.
It is, ultimately, again, it is a positive thing.
Okay, let's move on.
Let's move on.
All right. Next item on the agenda, seven, new business, 7A, establish Farmington High School class of 2018 graduation date, assuming no more notice.
I could not be more thrilled.
I just want to say motion.
All right. Can I have a motion to approve the administration's recommendation to establish Friday, June 15, 2018, as the date of the Farmington High School class of 2018 graduation ceremony?
Motion.
Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Absentions? Oh, thank God. Wait, is it against no Friday?
Don't say that. That is the graduation date. Yes.
They may have to go to school Monday.
Exactly.
But they're graduating.
Because of those emails that we received and everything. So that will be communicated to parents?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, next item, 7B, non-tenure teachers' report.
So this is a report that we bring to the board each year and for the board's action. And Kim, I hope you want to say a few words. Just to be clear, the first part of the report is a list of teachers who will be achieving tenure this year at the end of the year. And Kathy has the pleasure of observing all of them and visiting with them, and going with the principal to kind of see their work. So that's, I know, a highlight of her year.
You can see all of those names.
A lot of observations.
A lot of observations. A pleasure to be with each of the teachers and watch them.
And then the shorter list in part B are those teachers who are with us this year as either long-term subs or on a one-year contract. And by statute, we non-renew them at this time of year. They are notified in advance of this meeting that this will happen, so that no one is receiving this information by surprise. And then all of them are also informed that they're welcome to reapply for positions. And many times, you know, the position is still open, and they reapply, and we're happy with their performance, and they stay on with us.
So can I have a motion to move that the contracts of employment for teachers listed in section B above not be renewed for the following year upon expiration at the end of the current school year, and the superintendent's schools directed to advise such persons in writing of this action?
Motion.
Okay, any questions, comments, discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Absentions? Next item on the agenda, 7C, approval of new courses, first reading.
So this is per policy, something that we bring to the board. Sometimes we don't have much to report for new courses, but we have a great deal to report. So Veronica's here, Kim is here. Do you have any questions? But I think what you did see at the beginning of the board meeting, and what each of our department leaders went over, much of it is within this report.
Exactly. All right, so they did most of the work for me tonight. And I know you gave me an opportunity before to chime in, but I knew I'd be speaking on practically the same thing here, so I'm going to just, I kind of reserve my comments for now. First of all, I mean, just from what you saw, you can tell that there's great synergy in that group and between all the different people that are involved in making these kinds of changes. And also, I hope you noticed the alignment. There's a lot of vertical alignment in our district and a lot of that horizontal alignment as well, because you saw that they were talking about interdisciplinary. They were even talking about how they share different standards across different content areas and all that. And so there's a really deep understanding about mastery-based learning, and that you can see is a reflection on the entire system. So you can see that we're all sort of pulling in the same way. This is sort of an aside, but I just wanted to say, the other day, an opportunity, we do part of our induction process where our elementary school teachers come to the high school, high school teachers, new ones go to elementary, and they're always struck by what a system we have and how everyone's sort of rowing the boat in the same direction. And it really stuck out even today, as everyone's talking, Alicia talking, and that's all informed all across the way. And so none of the, all of these courses, as Kathy had said, everything that we're trying to do aligns to our, you know, all of our court documents. I think that one of the things you probably noticed is this idea of trying to offer more choice. Another idea is this idea, especially since we've really been working on mastery, the idea that time's the variable and the learning's the constant, which is really what you heard also in the math sequence change as well. So all of these things, very aligned. I'm very proud of all the work that everyone does. Like I said, very good synergy in the system. We all work well together, enjoy each other's, you know, thinking and company, and I'm trying to do what's best for kids in this district. And so, you know, earlier presentation was more for information so that you would know, but this is your actual opportunity to vote on this. This is a first reading of these courses. So I'll describe to you, and sometimes very briefly, because they've been described already a little bit. So the first page really tells you sort of the course approval process, that some courses are pilot courses. As you can see, we're very responsive to the needs of students. There's a lot of, often when she was, Amy was talking about the English electives, that was a huge process with students to, you know, really work with them about what they'd be interested in. And then we continue to get feedback on which courses work and whether they like them. So sometimes there are pilot courses that we try, not much interest, and they're gone again, and then some of them will stick around for a longer period of time. So on the second page, then, that's where the listing of the new courses begins. So I'll start describing some of them. As you know, we have a very robust capstone program. We're always trying to make improvements there, appeal to different audiences. This year, a very popular course was a sports analytics course, which was really a math kind of course, which we didn't really have a capstone in before, and we had quite a few students who were in that one. And then next year, we're looking at adding this social enterprise course, which is really in the area of the technical arts, so construction and the auto departments. And what they would be looking for is, the students would run it like a business, and especially look for places where they could help the community. So, you know, maybe places where there's elderly people and they need a ramp on their house or something like that. So the students would have to, you know, solicit projects, get projects, get the funding, do the whole thing. So part of their sort of construction coursework, but again, an extension in some capstone that wasn't there before. So we're looking to pilot that next year. At the next page, you'll see everything we've already talked about, so I won't talk about those in detail. The American Studies H, that's a new course, the Senior Elective Program. And then you should also know that we have added ESOL I and ESOL II, which is English for Speakers of Other Languages. Those are sheltered English classes, because we have had a real spike, as you know, many of you know, in our population of EOL learners. Generally, our learners who come in with second languages, or English as their second language, or even third sometimes, are in the younger grades, but we've seen more and more students come at the older levels, too. And so it makes it hard for them to, you know, without some extra additional support, to be able to access their other courses as well as they could. So this gives them that extra support. So we have two levels of that.
Can I interrupt you for one second? So I should have asked this earlier, but this English learners, this whole biliteracy designation.
Yes.
Is there an opportunity for those students who English is their second language?
Exactly, but because, so yes, but because they have to also be literate in English, so we have to wait then for some of these students to actually meet the standard in English as well. So just having the one language isn't enough? It's biliteracy, so.
Well, that's what I mean. But English as the second, not the first. But you're saying they must be.
Proficient then also in English.
Then something else.
Yeah, and not first, but in addition to. So they might be proficient in Polish first, but then they come here, they become proficient in English. Now they can take the Polish test, and then we'd have some ways for them to demonstrate that they're proficient in English, which probably is the credit requirement. But we're also looking to see if we can back that up to the junior year, so that we can already award that seal earlier. We don't want to wait until the end of the senior year, so we're trying to see if there's some flexibility in that. But it's so new that we're not, it's kind of like, we're not quite sure, but we're definitely looking into that, because it's, we think that that's something that is really nice for students to put on, you know, their application materials for colleges. Okay? And that's under the English, just so you know, because that is not a world language course, the ESOL, even though we have a world language teacher that teaches the courses, because she's certified also in ESOL, but it's actually an English class, and it follows the English standards, and students get English credit. Laura was here to talk about the math. So as you know, geometry will be going into a half-year course. And then there'll still be geometry, the Geometry H, and then there's an Algebra II A, and that'll be the first part of really a potentially two-semester course, or for some students, there'll be a three-semester course that'll prepare them then for the pre-calculus after that. And then personal finance, we've had personal finance, but we've been redoing the curriculum there so that we can include enough, you know, they'll work on things like credit, and how much, if you built up this much debt, how much time would it take to get out of the debt, and all those kinds of things. So some of the things are very mathematically-based concepts, so we put in enough mathematical content in there for the, to qualify, now that, you know, knowing what the standards are, there are enough standards in there that are, that would, that we could confidently say that the student met a requirement for math through that course. So it's not a new course, but it has been revised to the point where we can give math credit for the personal finance course. On the next page, a new, this is an honors course, Improvisational Music Design H. So again, that's a pilot, something that they're going to try. And this is, again, part of, if you're thinking about, you know, the more of, you know, student purpose and engagement, this is an attempt to say that people, high school students not only are copying other people's work, or just performing other people's pieces, but they themselves can also produce work and create their own arrangements. And so that's an attempt at a class that would be more for students to be looking more for students to be looking at different genres and creating their own music. Um, in science, this is an exciting, um, this is an exciting, um, course too, um, because a lot of students are really interested now in computer science, and this one, um, is one with something called App Inventor. So, students actually in this class design, you know, we all use apps now, like, on all of our phones and, you know, different tablets and, um, even on Chromebooks. So, students in this class learn how they can actually invent an app. So, it's a, it's a popular course, um, and it's another advanced placement. So, this makes a second, um, advanced placement, Computer Science Course Elective. Um, Social Studies, I didn't put the same description again, but as you know, that's the American Studies course, and in World Languages, um, Jerry, um, already described how we'll have a new American Sign Language Pilot Course, um, and I included French one there. We offer that every other year, so it doesn't always appear in the program of studies, so it is actually a course that we've had, but we only have it every other year. Um, but I wanted to point that out, because I think there's a lot of people in the community who worry that we're losing French and that, you know, that, and so I wanted to just make clear tonight that the French pathway, all the way to French AP, will continue to exist, um, in the Farmington Public Schools. So, I just wanted to make sure that was in there, because it wasn't in last year's program of studies. It shows up in this program of studies. It says it's not being offered in a year, and I didn't wanna create any confusion, so I just wanted to publicly state that we do have that course, that we continue, and we plan to continue to have that pathway in French. Um, so those are all the different, um, courses, and this is, uh, first reading, and so I'll take any additional questions, but I know you've had already, um, some opportunity to ask the department leaders themselves, maybe, but there might be some other questions you've got of since then.
Any questions for Veronica? All right, uh, can I have a motion to approve the first reading of the new courses to be implement, implemented in the 2018, 2019 school year at Farmington High School as presented?
Motion. Second.
Uh, any questions, comments? All right, all in favor? Aye, opposed, absentions? Thank you Veronica, and thank your team, it was a wonderful presentation tonight, so...
Thank you, I, I certainly will.
And thank you Kim too. Hi. Okay, next item on the agenda, item seven D, approval of revisions to policy 9327, videotape of board meetings, first reading.
Motion.
Second.
Okay.
So, this was a recommendation of the board for the Policy Committee, Christine, uh, the Chair, uh, to take out the part that we would review every year, because it's something pretty redundant, and so we didn't, uh, so we took that part out of the policy, uh, for your consideration and first reading.
Okay, any questions or comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, absentions? Next item on the agenda, seven E, approval of revisions to policy number 6112, School Day, first reading.
So, this is a, I'm just cleaning up the policy, we no longer have half-day kindergarten, so, we took that section out and integrate, made this a K-12, uh, area here, where we referenced that by Connecticut statute, it is only 450 hours for kindergarten that's required, and for all other grades, 900 hours, but we really don't need that, that second section that goes over really a half-day kindergarten program, so we're just cleaning it up.
All right, can I have a motion to approve the first reading of revised policy number 6112, School Day?
Motion. Second.
Okay, any questions, comments?
I have a, um, this, it doesn't really apply to this, but it does apply to the School Day policy, sort of. So, we, I noticed that because of all the snow days we've had, we're getting a lot of questions about, like, how many school days kids have to go. I just wanna, is it, it's true in Connecticut, I guess this is more for people watching, that you can't do one of those, like, snow bags, or like the, you know, snow day bags, or you have to be in school.
Right, we don't have the flexibility in our statutes like some other states have created, so, um, it's very specific on what a school day, um, it waits to in Connecticut, and it is students coming into the school. And even, and it's not a requirement of four hours, I know that's another, um, confusion, that, oh, students have to stay four hours, and if they don't stay four hours, it's not a school day. That was changed long ago for the safety of children, because if there is a weather event and you get students in, but yet, it's, it's getting dangerous out for the students to stay in, the worst thing is to say, oh, we have to stay four hours. Um, so the, you know, Connecticut did, uh, create flexibility there, but they, it's considered, you have to come into school for it to be a school day.
All right, I just knew there were a lot of questions about that, so, thank you.
Okay, uh, the motion to approve the first reading of revised policy number 6112, School Day, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, absentions? Okay, next item on the agenda, eight A, Consideration Business Administrator Report. You ready Vince? Catch your breath?
You're up.
We'll take a short recess if you're not ready.
You might just wanna ask, if you have any questions.
Yeah, right. Exactly. That's a lot.
Um, it, this is February, I, some of my comments, uh, earlier on Budget Impact, just, um, restating something, had to do with information that just came in March, so this is February, though, the board's looking at. And, um, on page four, when you look at the, um, grant awards, uh, the next time the board sees them, when they see the March, um, numbers for Open Choice, you know, it will go, that was the, the 809,000 was the original, um, amount of money we were thinking, and then we did receive the 830, as I mentioned. And then, those double asterisks go away, because we always base, um, the grant award off of last year's, until we have the new information, just as this is a, a presentation document, a projection document, and, so we'll take, um, we'll take the asterisk away, we'll put in the, um, 830, that's, um, set. The Open Choice Support one, right below it on page four, um, we thought we had our grant award, but the bonus was, it was, um, something that came, uh, later on, so that number does change too, in a positive direction. And self-insurance, um, still continues to, um, trend well, um, so, but I'm happy to, um, answer any other specific questions that the board may have. Any questions? Bill, you look like you're...
Nope.
He's gonna wait till next...
Any questions, uh, for Vince? All right, um, so, can I have a motion to approve the financial report dated February 2018?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, at this point in time, I'm gonna ask if I can have a motion to move up on the agenda, um, item 12, Executive Session, up to make that the new item nine.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, absentions? Okay, and then, in addition, I would also like a motion to add to, uh, item, uh, the new item nine on the agenda, a sub, uh, an item C, which will be Discussion Concerning in Attorney/Client Communication Regarding Steps for Addressing Claims Regarding the District Personnel.
So, so you're adding, so the new nine?
A new nine, C.
C, right, okay.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, opposed, absentions? Okay, can I have a motion to enter into Executive Session?
Motion. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, absentions? Okay, we're in Executive Session. Okay, uh, lovely, back in session.
Did you miss us Vince?
Can I have a motion, uh, to continue the meeting, uh, past the, that we made the time of 10 o'clock?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, absentions? Okay.
Begrudgingly.
Begrudgingly.
What happened? We say no.
I know, I know, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay, so, let's see, that was nine, so now, uh, item 10, Report to the Board Chair. Um, you know, I guess I'll just take this opportunity, we talked about it a little bit earlier, the two next, uh, you know, agenda meeting items, uh, for us to be cognizant of, were the joint meeting with the Town Council that we addressed, and then also the April 16th Town Meeting. Um, and just again, I'll take every opportunity until the word concluded, to thank everybody for their participation in the budget process. It's, uh, been a difficult and challenging one this year, and I think as we go through the process, um, in light of, you know, it's sort of the, the high school referendum project and pushing some items to referendum, um, on the capital projects, it's gonna be important for us to, uh, support, um, the budget as, as presented, and, um, you know, we presented it last night at the Town Council, went off relatively without any issues, very simple question was asked, and so, but I would just thank everybody again, and if, uh, we can, you know, make a point of coming to the April 16th meeting and then supporting the budget as we go through the process. Um, so then, next item, item 11, Consideration Committee Reports. A, Personnel Negotiations, Mark.
Well, we have, I guess, some tentative dates are being flowed out there right now. I got an email from Nicole, so, I don't know that it's going out to the whole team yet, but I know we are looking at possibly a busy May, so, once that gets nailed down, we'll have some final dates, but, um, I think there's some dates that are out there, starting to float around, to see if people are available, so, everybody will start getting those emails. I just got my first one last week, so, so more to come.
All right, thank you.
No, no official dates yet.
Okay, okay, 11B, Policy, Christine.
Uh, well Kathy and I met, and we updated some policies, uh, set some priorities, and more to come on that.
Okay, uh, C, Curriculum, Michelle.
Yeah, we met on March 20th, and I don't remember our follow-up date, though, Kim. It's on the calendar already, though, I'll...
We have a date.
Yeah.
Okay, and D, Communications, Ellen.
Uh, Bill and Christie and I met with Kathy and Amanda from the Walker Group, so it was really interesting, their potential, um, PR group. Um, the purpose of the meeting really was just to find out from the board what she thought, um, our major issues were. Um, it did turn out, we discussed mostly, uh, you know, a, um, potential high school project, and so that's really what mostly we talked about, um, but the Walker Group, really, I think if we, you know, as we begin our relationship with them, they really wanna try and streamline, um, you know, communications, uh, simplify, uh, how we can advocate, uh, for our schools, and, um, you know, we talked a lot about, uh, the demographics of our community, creating community connections, just brainstorming, um, some, some ideas, you know, potentially maybe highlighting some outcomes down the way to outreach to our community, and just pulling in stakeholders. And then, um, just as a side note, more to come, Kathy and I have been talking about some software, potential software, um, that we might want to, uh, use in the district that Plainville had some very, uh, good success with, um, and I think it would, but it could be a way for us to capture, speaking of demographics, people in our community that we, we don't hear from, and, um, because we, uh, in this company also can help build trust, um, with our community when we're asking for funding, and I think that's really important, and, uh, that spoke to me as an important issue in Farmington, and, um, I think, oh, and, and also really, it could be a way to, uh, for our board to have information kind of boiled down about our demographics, what, you know, what they're thinking, what, you know, just grouping our, getting a handle on our stakeholders, but more to come on that.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Okay, next item, item 12, Reported Liaisons, the item A, crack, no report, B, focus, Bill Beck.
No report, I've addressed some questions to the superintendent, to hope we can have, I gotta report for you guys the next time.
Okay, great, uh, 12C, Farmington Public School Foundation, Christine.
Meeting is April 24th.
Uh, 12D, Superintendent's Interlets, Classic Athletics.
Meeting is Thursday at 7:00.
Okay, each Chamber of Commerce, Michelle.
Uh, I mentioned a last time for these reports, that the chamber was partnering with the school with junior achievement, and they were going to do, um, basically a career day in a community of business offices, so that was scheduled for April, and it's being postponed, because the number of students that will be participating don't fit into the offices that are in, in that cluster. So, it is a really good problem. So, we're looking for a new cluster, so if anybody works in a, in a business environment like that, um, then let us know, because we'd like to, to move it to another place where they can walk easily between businesses, and then have a nice meeting space to meet after and to have a reception.
Just like you asked, what would be your rough number of participants, or you just...
Oh, about like 40.
Okay.
So, we had originally looked at Forest Park, but those offices are more like suites, and they're very small, so there wasn't a big meeting space there.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Uh, Green Efforts, Andrea.
Um, actually, there was a meeting tonight, but, um, the focus, uh, at the last meeting in March, um, has been on the Annual Townwide Cleanup, which is Saturday, April 21st, from 8:00 to 1:00, and, you know, school groups, um, youth groups are invited to participate in the Heaviest Hall Competition. I know the, the flyers in all the Friday folders right now, so, that's what's up there.
Okay, thank you. Uh, G, At-Hot Cafeteria, Liz.
We met, I don't remember when. We definitely met, and, um, what?
Last month.
Last month. And, um, I mean, the, there's gonna be an upgrade, an update to the way that, um, the students check out at the cafeteria line, I guess our system is pretty old, or as far as that goes, as far as technology goes, so, that's something to look forward to.
Okay. Can I add one thing?
Oh, sure, I, I...
Absolutely, and, just one thing, uh, because it was new information from Beth and Jose, actually, just as, um, late today, that, um, they think they're going to be able to achieve opening up breakfast at Westwoods with, um, Alicia Bowman during this, um, school year.
Oh, great.
Um, so that's a very positive thing for the cafeteria program.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, thank you both, and, uh, 12H, Health and Wellness, Ellen.
Our next meeting is April 23rd.
Okay, great, thank you.
Chris, may I add the, the next curriculum meeting is May 14th.